Just takes a minute to stream. Excuse me. Okay. Just a few more seconds here. This is always the part of the show where I'm still working, working on because it's very hard to, uh, oh, good. Okay. It says we're live. Excellent. All right. So everyone, I want to thank you for tuning in to Politics and Prosecco. I am joined by a very special guest and a friend of mine, Lisa Wong, former mayor of Fitchburg. And Lisa is joining me tonight to have this very important conversation about Black and Asian relations in the time of this social unrest. Um, so I found it necessary to reach out to her because women are oftentimes on the front lines of social justice. And what better person to have than someone who sat in a position of power, but also is a tireless advocate to bring these issues to light. So Lisa, why don't you introduce yourself to the audience? And we'll get started.
Hey, everyone. My name is Lisa Wong, Jacquetta's friend. So I just wandered in the room and thought I'd have a conversation with her about some really effing important things that are happening in the world right now, especially across our nation. Um, I'm so honored that you want me to come on here to talk about it. I've had a number of hats on for the last, I don't know, four decades of my life. So I'm happy to bring all of that in. I think a lot of folks know me as the former mayor of Fitchburg. I was there for four terms a million years ago. And more recently, I'm a town manager in Winchester. So I've also been in leadership positions in a few nonprofits across the state. So done work in economic development, affordable housing, things like that. So, um, a lot of my work has been about building community, literally and figuratively. And even though I, a lot of the work I've done, I can point to things I've built. Um, it's the things I can't point to as, um, as easily, like, like community or organizations or empowering um, other people to become leaders themselves that I'm actually most proud of.
Yeah, yeah. So Lisa, this conversation is important to me because I often think of myself as somebody, I have friends across the spectrum. I have white friends, black friends, Asian friends, Latinx friends, gay friends, straight friends. Like I have, I, everybody, I'm an equal opportunity friend. That's how I like to put it. I don't, um, think of my friends in categories. I'm never like, oh, I have four Asian friends. I'm always just like, oh, this is my friend Lisa, this is my friend Giles, my friend Sam, like, I have had to have a few come to Jesus conversations with myself about my allyism in the Asian community and not feeling some type of way about how my life is mattered in this country and if there was allyism coming from the Asian community. That being said, all of my friends were marching with me last year. Um, and it wasn't that I didn't expect them to, it's just a conversation we haven't had. We haven't had to have it, especially our generation. We haven't had to have conversations about stepping into each other's life and standing up for each other because that's just, in the time that we were born, we weren't post-racial, but we certainly didn't feel the need to say, hey, Lisa, Black Lives Matter, I need you to say this. That was never, that never crossed my mind. In the last few weeks, what we saw in Georgia really pushed the limits of loyalty, excuse me, between African Americans and Asians in this country. Taking the focus off of the tragedy, really, and, and bringing the focus more to African Americans saying, this is not a community that's ever stood up for anyone when it comes to Black lives being devalued or Latinx, uh, lives being valued. I know that to be untrue. There's Grace Lee Boggs, who is probably one of the most badass women. She's up there with Angela Davis in my head. I live for Grace Lee Boggs. Um, but there, there are more people like her, um, that we just don't know. Bruce Lee himself was an advocate for equal rights and equal justice. Can you talk to the group a little bit about why that feeling is validated by African Americans and, and what, how you perceive that?
Yeah, I mean, these are a lot of difficult conversations. Um, so let me start by kind of going in two different directions. So one is just a more recent commentator from somebody who I consider to be an ally. Uh, but this was a commentator on Boston Public Radio who back in February, when, uh, uh, they were talking about Biden's proclamation against anti-Asian racism, um, said, well, you know, the reason why there hasn't been as much progress in terms of anti-Asian racism is because Asian leaders aren't as loud and charismatic as Black and Brown leaders. Um, and it was both showing allyship, but also enforcing stereotypes at the same time, um, while also acknowledging that the racism has been generational and the systematic issues are generational. So it was so interesting to kind of see all that at the same time. And I will bet you that I've been guilty of that too, because it's so ingrained in us. Um, the Asian Town Hall that, um, was put on by, um, a great group, yeah, the one that happened last night, on March 25th, by a number of great organizations. Yeah. Um, there was a discussion about the model minority myth uh, and, and how that was actually a manufactured tool to create Asians as a, as a racial wedge in the black, white.
That's right.
Racist identity. So, um, I can see that. Some people are like, oh yeah, I know. But, but you know, for those who don't know what that means, it means that, um, even though the Asian experience in this country has been, um, one of tremendous trauma, but also one that is infused with opportunity. Um, and you know, beautiful stories. The whole idea of the model minority myth is to wash away all those experiences into the common story that if you are hardworking and you are quiet and you assimilate, that you will be successful. Even though a lot of the Asian immigrants that were allowed in, um, because Asian immigrants were not allowed in for generations because of the Chinese Exclusion Act, but once, you know, we were allowed in, it was those who had degrees and education, you know, an ability to assimilate, right? And show, um, progress in this model minority of if Asians can do it, then everyone else should. It was a way to shame our Black and Brown brothers and sisters.
That's right.
That, uh, see, we're going to, you know, import people who are educated, basically tell them that, you know, if they assimilate, um, and if they, you know, don't make noise and they don't organize that, um, you know, we will raise them up in terms of allowing for, uh, you know, sort of, you know, white proximity.
That's right.
Living in the neighborhood.
I love that you're saying that. So perfect.
Yeah. And, and it's, and it's a hard discussion because it, it means that, um, Asians have to confront the anti-blackness within our community, both acknowledged and unacknowledged.
Yeah.
We also have to acknowledge that, uh, because we've been used as a racial wedge and been used to shame, um, other, you know, BIPOC members of our community, that there's huge amounts of animosity against us. And there is definitely, um, been, I would say, a whole lot of Asian Americans who probably would have been more vocal if this, um, if this myth didn't exist. And I, and I, and I always question about how much I've benefited from the myth and also how much I've been harmed because it's not an easy story. It's not a, uh, you know, you know, you follow it or you don't. It's not that easy because it's imposed.
It's absolutely imposed. That's right.
Is the element of lack of control. Um, and those conversations, okay.
It's layered.
They're not in our history books.
Well, no, and they're purposely not there.
They're, they're not there. And they're also, it's really hard to have these generational conversations.
Yeah.
Right. So I see Suzanne Lee, who's out there, you know, talking about these things, but she was in it. I mean, she started teaching, you know, when there was busing. I mean, she has been there, but there's a, you know, and even my own parents who kind of took their kids to the suburbs um, to assimilate, right? Not take the language to, um, you know, to, to be quiet.
Yeah.
Work hard, um, and who still fear every time I speak out. Um, they do, they, you know, it, um, it does not make them feel comfortable.
Sure.
Uh, but that, that's the thing, you know, having these uncomfortable conversations with our own family, those are, those are really hard because we're not really necessarily raised to have those either, but it's like, like I thought, like this is, this is what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Need to be talked about more in it because it's not.
Absolutely. And I think there are so many layers. It can't just be one conversation. I think there needs to be a concerted effort to have more conversation. There's, there are layers to this, you know? Um, one of the things that we've been discussing in our community is, you know, African Americans never thought of America as the land of opportunity, as most immigrant families come here thinking that this is the land of opportunity. We were stolen from our land. We didn't, we didn't volunteer to come. And so here we are, only not even 200 years removed from slavery. We're not even 200 years removed from people being in chains. And, and quite frankly, we're not 70 years removed from Japanese internment camps.
Yep.
This country has a history built on, on, um, making the other feel inferior. I think what we all need to do as a community of BIPOC is to understand that one's fight is everybody's fight. When Black people are out there saying, hands up, don't shoot, they're talking about Latinx and Asian people. The problem is when we're saying, stop Asian hate, are we saying, stop Asian hate, stop Black hate, stop Latinx hate? That's, I think that's where the disconnect is. And I think that's the conversation that needs to happen is we are fighting for you. Are you fighting for us?
Yeah. And I, I think that's where, um, when I see the fear that is underlying a lot of hate against, um, minorities or the others that are rising.
Yeah.
Because people do think that the pie is fixed and it's not. Um, you know, and it's the same folks who sort of talk about this as a land of opportunity, you know, the Westward, you know, the Westward expansion. Well, the same thing can happen. I mean, there, 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 you know, there, there's limitless opportunities. Uh, and I think we, there's so much evidence that shows that immigration has positive economic implications. Um, and I mean, we, we see industries suffer when immigration is curtailed.
Yeah.
I also think that the, again, the history books, um, I mean, the whole, you know, the whole concept of comfort woman, where that, you know, Asian men for, for many generations were also stolen.
That's right.
And brought in as sex slaves, um, throughout the world.
Sex trafficked before it became normal to talk about on TV.
Yes, and still happening, still happening today. There are, um, organizations that I work with here in Massachusetts. Um, and there's people I know, thankfully, that have been able to escape from that and rebuild their lives here in Massachusetts. But we're talking, this stuff is happening right here, right now.
Second Step, that, that's an organization I volunteer with.
Yep.
Um, they, they have had this conversation about sex trafficking specifically in the AAPI community. And it was really ignored. You know, I think Second Step was the first organization I had heard about. Um, but I think you're right. So I know, I know you're like, you took time away from book clubs. So I want to make sure I'm respectful of your time. But what, what do you expect for allyism from people who are not in the Asian community? How can we best advocate? What can we do in this moment right now? Forget the fact that we all feel a certain type of way or people may be in their feelings. What can we do? What's two things that we can do right now to be supportive of our Asian brothers and sisters?
Yeah. I, I would say the first thing is to listen and learn. Um, one of the things that I fear, that I know, uh, a lot of people in my community and culture fear is that we will continue to be invisible and that, um, you know, whatever momentum and attention is being paid to uh, deep rooted and generational issues right now will be forgotten.
Yeah.
So we need to band together and know each other's history. Um, and, and by listening and learning, we can help hopefully overcome whatever animosity that we have. Um, and by sharing our stories with each other, that's how it's going to live on. It's going to live on because I talk to you, you talk to me. I talk to my children, you know, so on and so forth. So, um, we cannot let anyone's history disappear. And I'm talking about the history of my husband who is Puerto Rican. I'm talking about your history, my history.
Shout out to Anthony.
History. But I, I mean, I just, it just, it bo, it boggles my mind, um, how much of our, our lived experiences, past and present are,
Yeah.
They're nowhere. So it, it's up to us to figure out how to get them into our communities, into our conversations, into our Facebook groups, into our podcasts, into our book clubs, into our family dinner tables. So that's really, really important. Um, and I would say the, the, the second thing that, um, is poor pertinent right now is, uh, the Attorney General, um, Rep. Winn and a few other allies are really trying to push for the Hate Crimes Bill to be stronger here in Massachusetts. And I think that's, that's very, very important. Um, and it's all interconnected. Everything is underreported. Um, what, unfortunately, so many hate crimes, so many hate incidences, speech, it's, it's vastly underreported. The laws do need to be strengthened. Um, but you know, in terms of looking at this systematic approach, um, I think also that's where there is, there is a disconnect between what's happening at the community level and what's happening with politicians and police. That trust really needs to be built. Um, and it starts with people like, like you and I that have a foot in a community and we have a foot in politics. And we have a foot in this, this political space where there's not many of us. There's not many people that are looking like us, have a lived experience or, or, um, you know, pushing for the things that we're pushing for, even though for us, it's the same things we've been saying our entire lives.
That's right.
I'm not going to take that for granted, that I have a foot in these other spaces.
Sure.
Kind of bridge that gap between, you know, the community groups, the trust and the organizing that they've built with people. And then these other institutions that have the power.
Yeah.
Or it's the courts, it's, you know, um, the constitutional officers, it's a town manager position, right?
The delegation in, in general. Yeah.
Exactly.
So I want to thank you for coming on. This is a conversation that I hope you come back so we can finish it. We'll give you more than 20 minutes. Um, but I want to thank you for even stepping up and saying, yes, Ed, come on and have this conversation. I think this is so important and it's, it's necessary for people to know that there's advocacy happening in the AAPI community and it always has been there. But you got to step out of your comfort zone to get to know that. So I thank you for coming on, my friend. My best to you, Anthony and the baby.
Absolutely.
Not a baby, no. She's like a toddler.
Uh, two and a half year old. Amazing.
Thanks.
So amazing. So vocal. Yay.
Yes, we love it. Thank you so much for coming on, Lisa.
Take care.
All right. Bye bye. All right, everybody. My next guest is running for city councillor at large. Her name is Kelly Bates. We're going to let her in. And she's here. So Kelly is running for city council at large for Boston. And as you all know, 7,000 people are currently running for mayor. And I believe we have, um, we're starting to see more and more people decide to jump in on the city council race. So when I found out Kelly was running, I had to have her on Politics and Prosecco, of course. Um, and we're going to let her off the hook today for not having a drink in hand because I am, uh, currently not, oh, wait a minute. My girl, yes. I'm sorry, I guess I'm the one that's off today. I'm not home, so I'm off. Um, but thank you for absolutely celebrating the brand. We appreciate that.
Of course.
I was saying, I was like, oh, I didn't even like, you know, I flew out this morning. I was like, I didn't even tell her to have a drink in hand. But we are so excited to have you on and I'm excited to have you run. Um, I have followed you for a long time and you're somebody I respect and you, you quietly move. So you're not out there, you know, telling everybody your resume, but people who know you know the work that you've done. So welcome to Politics and Prosecco where we get down and we ask some real questions, but it's always, um, fun. So the first question is, what are you sipping on?
Okay. I actually am just sipping on water because I just came from a, a run. I know, I know, healthy. And, uh, you know, gotta just replenish.
We'll roast her later, y'all. Don't worry. Um, so tell us why you're running. Why now?
Yeah, I'm running because, listen, we know that women, we know that Black women in particular, we're crisis management leaders. We're mothers. And frankly, we are coming out of a period where we're going to need really strong leadership, right? We really need to recover from our past couple of years. We really need to repair our city and we need to reimagine our future. And, you know, I love the city and I really worry if we don't have people at the table who do have a strong track record around leadership and getting things done, our city is going to be set back. It's too difficult for people to live in this city and stay here, right? We got people moving further and further out in the city or leaving the city because they can't afford the housing. And we've got a lot of people struggling right now who just came out of a really tough period or are pivoting as we get vaccinations. So our kids are struggling, right? We've got folks who are dealing with mental health issues, addiction, and our schools, you know, need a lot of support. And my son is in the Boston Public Schools. He has been from the very beginning. I come from a whole family of public school teachers. So, you know, we need people who are going to have courage to make our schools really world-class. So I just, I think it's, it's our time.
Yeah. You know, one of the things that I have seen over the last, you know, there's this arc of melanin wave coming where women of color are running more often. And what we know is that is going to come to an end. It's going to run its course. And we may not have enough people in the pipeline. And part of that is because most sisters aren't really, um, thinking about offices outside of local government. So why the city council?
Well, well, first of all, a healthy challenge. I actually think we do have a pipeline.
Do you?
I, I'm actually, I'm wearing my shirt from Higher Heights.
Oh, alright.
This is a, a national organization of Black political women, training up Black women to run for office. I was at their bootcamp. And so we're developing pipelines all over the country. You know, what happened in Georgia is happening in Boston. So I, I do believe we do have a pipeline. We do need to nurture it more to your point.
That's right.
But I think there'll be Black women coming up from behind me, you know, very, very soon.
Good.
But for city council, I'll tell you why. We have so many good people running for mayor. And many of you can list who those people are. We need a city council to back up that mayor to turn around the city and bring it to the vision that we've had for a long time to be more equitable. So I think it's important to have women on the city council. I think it's important to have Black and Brown women on the city council. And, and moms, you know, who can really amplify the issues that we're facing and work in tandem with the mayor. I know most of the mayoral candidates. I've worked with them over the years. So regardless of who wins, I already have a relationship, which I think makes me stand out from the others. So I can really hit the ground running.
Yeah. So now listen, the, how, how do you explain to voters? Or, or what do you say to voters who said, we've never seen you in our community before? We, we don't know where you've come from. Tell us a little bit about who you are and why you're the right choice. Because the city council has, in case people don't know, and I have to, sometimes I have to educate. For city council seats, um, and then there are district seats, um, as well. Michelle and Anissa are at-large councillors and they are vacating those seats in order to run from there. So that makes it two open seats. Um, but when you run for at-large, you're kind of running against everybody to fill those seats. Um, although someone, no one is saying, I'm going to take out Julia, I'm going to take out, um, Flaherty. So for people who aren't like me, who aren't following you and obsessed with your Instagram, how do you explain who you are and where you came from?
Absolutely. So I've been in different parts of this city for over 30 years. I, I think I'm a story that a lot of people can relate to because I first started in Brighton. Um, I went to law school and lived in Brighton, in Brighton Center, and really spent my time in the Brighton-Austin community studying civil rights. Uh, actually, at the time that Rodney King was brutally, uh, beat up and that just changed my life. 92, right? And I remember going to the streets with law professors saying, this has got to stop. And, you know, that changed my life. And from there, I started to do a lot of civil rights work. And then I led a women's organization at 26 years old called the Women's Statewide Legislative Network. It doesn't exist anymore. And while I was there, we got one of the first laws in the nation to prevent sexual harassment before even anybody talked about that.
Before the Me Too, that was cool, right?
Before Me Too, I mean, this was like back when Anita Hill was coming forward to talk about what happened with her, with Justice Clarence Thomas. We also got regulations passed so that women could stay in the hospital longer after childbirth. They were kicking us out 24 hours. I mean, it was ridiculous, not being able to heal. And so I was very young, but you know, really working with other women across the city. From there, from the Brighton-Austin area, I moved to Jamaica Plain and was very, very active in organizing, whether it was economic justice organizing, racial justice organizing, and couldn't afford, like many people, to stay there. So I moved to Rosendale, very, you know, a lot of people can relate to that experience. While I was in Rosendale, uh, basically being a mom and raising my son, I was part of the effort to make sure that the libraries stayed open. They were trying to close them. They were trying to close one here, one there. And Rosendale was really small. And I said, wait a second. And we got together with all the organizers across the city and the libraries. I said, we're going to stick together. We're going to say you can't close a single branch. And in fact, you need to renovate them. And just the other day, I was driving past Rosendale and there it is, being renovated. They did not close those libraries for our kids.
Rossberry just got their, their library renovated. Um, it looks fabulous. I can't wait to go in.
That's right. That's right.
What do, because a lot of times what happens is when people run, they give their platform. But my question to you is, what are two things off the top of your head that you can say, this is what I'd like to see changed? And what I plan to do as a city council, because what we know is it's a very mayor-heavy system in Boston. And what we've seen over the last two to three years is a very hostile relationship between the fifth floor and the city council chambers. And that doesn't help anybody. Um, it doesn't help anybody. And quite frankly, a lot of people are turned off by that kind of tension. Especially in this day and age where everyone's like, well, we got enough to worry about. We don't got to worry about city councils walking around with an attitude. Like, it's unnecessary. Um, so, you know, what are two things that you think could change here in the city and what you plan to do with them? And, and do you plan to have a working relationship with the fifth floor, even when you're in disagreement? Because I think that's important.
I do too. I think you're speaking truth. I think there's, um, I think there's too many egos in politics. And I come out of running an organization that's about collaboration. Like, there is room for all of us. I mean, we're trying to work toward justice in the city. And I think number one, is this something that not every voter understands? We have to empower our city council to actually be able to share power with the mayor. Meaning, right now, there's an up and down vote on the budget. We should be able to offer amendments to the budget, offer changes, offer policy that our voters want to see.
That's right.
I think we have to have any mayor that's running commit to sharing power with the council because that's sharing power with the neighborhoods and with the local communities.
That's right.
So we really have a voice. The mayor has to listen to us. We have to work with the mayor, right? It's a symbiotic relationship.
Yeah.
I also think we just have to change the way business gets done. People need more access to the city.
And transparency.
And transparency. I mean, a, a lot of people have a constituency aide. I, I need a constituency aide, frankly, that's a social worker. And like someone who can help. And like someone who can help people get access to services, businesses get access to what they need and work with the fifth floor, work with everybody to engage in that. You know, so I, I think we have to have more power sharing, more things like participatory budgeting where we set aside some money and the community can actually decide where it wants to go. Because, um, there's just, this, we can't do this alone. You know, the voters elect us in there, but after that, they trust a lot in us. That's not enough.
It's not enough, but it's necessary to go in trusting someone. Because, quite frankly, the city council is the voice of the people when they're up there. And my, what I expect, and look, listen, having grown up in Boston, um, you know, I expect my representatives to not only behave in a certain way, but I expect them, when they're speaking on the floor, that they're speaking to me, about me, for me, not for their own personal gain. And I think we've seen that across the country. But in local politics, there's no need for it because that is really where the core gets done. I, you know, I worked for Mayor Spicer and before that I had always worked in federal government or state government. And those results are just very long, you know, state government is just very long results. In City Hall, you have more tangible results. It's quicker. You can actually see your work being done. That's what I'm hoping that happens with the city council going forward. Because what we've seen and what our viewers have said, what people who listen to our podcast say is they are done with the way that it's been done, which is, I'm going to come up here as a community activist turned city councillor. And that means I'm gonna get loud and I'm gonna get as ratchet as I need to be because that is how my, my, my people respond. And quite frankly, that is not who I am. I'm, I'm, I'm not as loud. I know people think I'm, I know what you're thinking. But I am loud and I'm confrontational and I'm not. But, um, it is necessary to, to have some form of decorum. I just think you catch more flies that way. Um, and there's definitely some, some issues that have come to the forefront, like criminal justice reform, police reform. Where do you stand on those issues?
Listen, I think even though Boston has done a good job around policing compared to other cities around the country, we still don't have enough black and brown police officers, firefighters, teachers, et cetera. And frankly, there's a lot of resources in the police budget, including overtime, that could be diverted to non-policing interventions. We need to have people trained up to deal with calls that don't need to go to the police, that don't need criminalization, that don't need, frankly, the police's time to help those communities. So I think there's a lot of creative things that we need to do that relieve police, but also frankly, keep people having their problems solved, but not through a system that's about penalizing people, but more about prevention.
And so how do you, as a city councillor, when the budget comes up? And, and that is such a hot-button issue, um, the police budget. Um, it's such a hot-button issue. It doesn't really have to be if, if you've done your research and you've done the work. Um, how do you plan to navigate those waters when you become a city? See how I'm manifesting, I'm speaking this into existence, like, when you become a city councillor at large? How do you plan to navigate those waters? Because you will have city councillors who absolutely want to dig their heels in and die on the hill for something that can be resolved. What is your plan? Like, how do you plan to navigate those waters?
Well, going back to the point I was making before, I think we have a short window. I think we need to make sure that any mayor that comes in and the city council agrees to amend that charter so that we can have the ability to shape that budget. So that if one disagreement happens, the whole thing doesn't fall down. That is ridiculous. That is too much power for a mayor, no matter how much I love some of these mayoral candidates.
Sure.
And so that is how I would navigate it. I would immediately start to organize with the mayor, as well as the city councillors, to amend that charter. And to your point earlier, because I have relationships, highly collaborative, very respectful relationships for those candidates running, whoever gets in, I will be able to start very early, being able to lay that groundwork, as opposed to being oppositional. Now, I think there are times that call for accountability to a mayor. There are times that call for us to speak truth to power. But anyone who's known me in the city, anybody who's worked with me knows, it's about building collaboration. It's about building consensus. And frankly, being in the interest of what the voters want. And this up and down budget system, not working for any of us.
So I'm gonna hit you with some questions.
Please, while I drink my, my water.
Um, do you believe in an elected school board or appointed?
I think I'm one of the few candidates at large that's willing to stand and say that I'm for a fully-elected school committee. A lot of people are, oh, hybrid. And I, I'm not saying that I don't think that the mayor should have a role in school politics, but she or he has the superintendent, a whole staff of people behind him or her. I think we need voices of parents, we need voices of our young people, we need voices of different kinds of people on the school committee that voters can hold accountable. And I would also say that we need to ensure that we have a youth representative on that school committee that is paid like every other school committee member. Because these young people put a lot of time in.
Yeah.
Talk about the issues. That being said, though, we gotta be careful what we wish for. If we do that, I can tell you that I spend way too much time raising money, trying to be a candidate, instead of talking to people, which is what I want to be doing. So we're gonna have to think about that in the school committee. We want access. We want people to be able to run who don't necessarily have money and don't have access to networks. So we just need to be careful about that and think about, could we re, could we bring back public funding of elections? Which was an idea many, many years ago. I was actually a plaintiff on a lawsuit to bring public funding of elections to the state. So that people could run, you know, and have a baseline of resources.
Yeah. As a city councillor, when do you think we will see a black or brown female police commissioner? Because right now, it's a little messy. So it's very messy.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, probably is this next mayor. I, I, I'm putting up, uh, we can bet right now, we can see. Um, and I know some of them in the pipeline. I will not name names. And I've basically said to those women, get ready.
Good.
Get ready, get ready, because they're going to be looking for you.
And I always think, you know, women are just better than everybody. So, I'm, I'm so, I would be so elated to see, because women just get shit done. We just do it. And it, it's, we are cheerleaders, we are advocates and we are strategic in our thinking. So I'm sure, you know, some of the guys that probably will listen, like, I don't care what you think. But I was just saying, I think it's time for the Boston Police to have a female commissioner. I'm rooting for Lisa Holmes. I know she doesn't want it because she wants to retire. But I'm rooting for Lisa Holmes. But I'm glad to hear you say that because I think, I think it's necessary, especially as we move into more women finding and, and standing in power. We just saw that on Wednesday. We had our black Congresswoman introducing our black chief justice who introduced Kim Janey as the first, um, acting black mayor in mass, in, in Boston. Like, that is a huge deal. And listen, I'd never get enough of black girl magic. So I'd be there all day, every day. Um, but I'm glad to hear you say that. And then finally, for me, black businesses have been suffering. Um, especially with this pandemic, but they were suffering before. And what we see, you know, now that we have Nubian Square, um, there aren't enough black businesses that own the land that they stand on. So to me, it isn't a win to just name something, um, so that you can feel pride in it. It's prideful when you can walk into a business there knowing that these people won't have to face eviction one day. What, what is your plan as a city councillor to sort of bring light to that issue? Because that is so, so important. Black businesses are what keep the economy in those neighborhoods going. And it elevates people into a sense of security, where they can feel like, yes, this is my neighborhood. I feel welcome here. I feel included here. My culture is celebrated here. All of that. I mean, you look at Mattapan Square. Oh, man, it's just.
That's right. It's right. So we've got a huge, we have a huge opportunity there. Well, first of all, I've, I've been in business, self-employed and run businesses, including my husband, who's a Haitian-American Realtor and now is a manager for Daryl's, our establishment, Black Boston. Um, I really am passionate about this and I grew up with a father who was a small business owner. Couple of things we need to do. We gotta deal with the question that we found out with the data that we're not giving enough contracts to women-owned businesses, black and brown businesses, which includes women of color owned businesses in the city of Boston. So let's look at that. Let's look at that squarely. Let's look at the data. And we actually need to have clear goals and benchmarks for every city department across the city. And then we need to measure against those and have a dashboard. It's not enough to say you're gonna do it. Let's measure it. Let's look at it. We need to make sure we're getting women, and, and I don't like the word minorities, that's the legal language, but that, you know, black people and people of color get certified in Boston quickly for businesses. And can we, can we think about Nubian Square together? We need to get the community together and think about Mattapan Square and Nubian Square and say, what is our vision? What do we want to do? And how long? You know, there are still some vibrant businesses in Nubian Square, but there's so much potential we haven't realized. And how do we get people to own those buildings? How do we get the businesses to come in? But not, not move into gentrification, but that beautiful balance where we go, wow, look at what we've done together.
That's right.
And I don't, I don't know many people, frankly, across the city, who cares deeply as I do about Mattapan. I live in Hyde Park, right next to Mattapan. My husband grew up in Dorchester, Mattapan area. You grew up in Hyde Park? Come on, you know? And so bring the Haitian-American community, bring the African-American community, bring the Caribbean community together. What's our vision? What are we gonna do? We can't wait for anybody. We have to be able to put out that vision.
And if you think about Hyde Park, I grew up on Ready Ave. And, um, we just sold, uh, so we had two lots. We had the house that we stood on and then we had a, my dad turned our, the back lot into a backyard. Um, and everybody on my street was a black homeowner. Every single one of them was a black homeowner. And there was the store on the corner that was owned by a black man. Um, the store on the other corner by Lexington Street was owned by, um, a Puerto Rican man. But there was not a lot of love given to Hyde Park. Recently, Mayor Walsh, to his credit, said, I know the commuter rail's coming through there. We need to uplift what's happening over there. There's now a clinic, a dentist, supermarket, two banks. Um, and you can literally drive on the River Street part of Hyde Park and do all of your business in one area. And I have often said, the success of the city is when somebody gets their hair, their nails, their teeth, their clothing, all of that done within a six-mile radius because you're putting money back into your community. And I often wonder if, when you're running for office, are those, are you thinking about the constituents? Or do you come at it from the lens of yourself? I would, I would come at it from the lens of myself, like, listen, I get my hair done in Roxbury. Just bought a house in Roxbury. Like, I, you know, I'm, I, you know, my dentist is in the South End. Like, these are the things that are important to me. These are the things where I spend my money and I'm pouring back into my community that looks like me. Again, going back to black businesses. I mean, and, and yes, all of my, all of my work is done by black folks. I'm apologetically black.
No, I love that. I, I appreciate that lens. I think you've given me a gift today. I think I wanna think about what you're talking about. Walking through the neighborhoods. I love that about Mayor Menino. Say what you want about him. Um, but he would just be present in the neighborhoods and see what was going on. And I would want to be that person. Think about, right, how to live and work here and social, have a social environment. So what do we need? I'm all about visuals too, as well as like beautification of our neighborhoods, businesses, you know, restaurants. And let's get, let's keep people out dining outside. And let's bring some of those businesses to Mattapan and Nubian Square, black-owned and others who want to make a difference and be a part of the first. Let's not be afraid to walk in and say, no, we're gonna try something together and see what it will look like in five or 10 years. That way, black professionals will stay in this city. They won't be leaving for the South. I mean, listen, it's warmer there. We're never gonna have that warm weather. But will want to stay here and, and, and raise their families here, just like you were here.
Absolutely. Well, our time is, is coming to a close, but I did want to just ask you two more questions. One is very, very important during this race is city council, the, the city council offices and, and quite frankly, the mayor's office has a huge staff of white folks. And what I've been asking is every candidate, whether it's been the mayor candidates or the city councillors, what is your commitment to hiring staff of color in decision-making roles? And it's important that I say decision-making roles because anybody can answer that.
That's right.
Not everybody can do strategy, especially if they're not given the chance. So what's your?
I'm fully committed to that and I have a track record. Everyone knows I run nonprofits in the city. If they know who I am, like, in my organization right now, I run a national collaboration for racial justice organization. The person who runs our training, who's our, one of our senior leaders, black woman. My finance director, black woman. People say they can't find black women in finance. Oh, she's the best one we've ever had. My assistant is a Brazilian woman. Um, and I also have wonderful white folks on my staff as well. But you can just look and see, and that's been my track record wherever I am. My campaign manager is a South Asian woman who worked on the John Ossoff campaign. Um, you know, it's all about, you know, having that beautiful balance and those perspectives and giving people an opportunity. Because we're there and we're doing amazing things. So I would absolutely be committed to that. I, I would want you to expect nothing less of me.
Absolutely. And, and we will hold you to the fire if we need to. Now, we hope you come back, but your entry to come back is in that glass needs to be something that is alcoholic.
I, I, I can't promise to do that. You all know, some of you know, I'm a, I'm a health nut. So, um, but if not, I will make it look very pretty. I'll make it look very pretty.
I mean, grapes are fruit. So we expect wine or something, or, you know, just pop a cork or something, like, let us.
Exactly.
Like, let us feel like you're in the moment. I get it. Well, I am, again, I'm so happy that you're running. Um, and I hope you come back after everyone gets on the ballot and the race really gets off and running. Um, and again, tell people where they can find you on Instagram, Facebook, how they can get involved in your campaign.
So it's easy across social media platforms and my website. It's Bates for Boston. Uh, there's a video on my website if you just want to get to know me more personally. I think.
Oh, I love your launch video.
Oh, thank you so much.
Love your launch video, mostly because I don't like John Santiago's launch video. But I love your launch video. I thought it was fresh. It was exciting. I wanted to watch you run, which is odd, but I thought it was good. Like, it really, it made me want to see, okay, well, what else does she have to say? Which is what launch videos are supposed to do.
I appreciate that. I started running when I was 42. So anybody can do it. And I used to be 200, 210 pounds after I gave birth to my son. So never say never.
Yes, and we're, we're all about getting healthy this year. So I'm here for it. Well, again, thank you. You all can find her. You said, you heard her. She said Bates for Boston. So go to Instagram, go to Facebook, sign up to volunteer, do what you like. Just want to see more women in the pipeline. And again, Kelly, thank you, thank you, thank you. We'll have you back on Politics and Prosecco for sure.
Thank you so much, sister. Great to see you.
You too. All right, everybody. That concludes this episode of Politics and Prosecco. I'm flying back into Boston. So I am going to sign off from here. This episode will be streamed on YouTube and on Instagram, uh, within the next day or so. So thanks for tuning in, guys. Bye.